Our prayer and pledge this evening will be by Councilmember Doug Young. Mr. Young?
Mayor, before I ask for a moment of silence, I'd like to ask for the prayers for Dennis Ramier. Dennis is our former Parks and Recreation Director and School Board Member who is in Vanderbilt Hospital. Now, please join me on a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, September 22, 2011. A couple of mentions. We have been notified recently that our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2010, has qualified the city of Murfreesboro for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And my understanding is this is the 13th year in a row that we have received this designation, and the plaque is going to be shipped to somebody who had a lot of work and involvement in getting that done, Melissa B. Wright, our city recorder. So Ms. Wright, we are very pleased and proud for you to accept this on behalf of the city, and we thank you very much for your hard work and the work that you share with all of our city departments to make this happen. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a team effort.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. That is outstanding. And some of you may note that we have done some remodeling in our council chambers, and for those of you who are looking in front of me for the city manager and the city attorney and Ms. Wright, you'll notice that they have joined us at the podium where we can get our hands on them quicker. So we certainly appreciate that change, and we have new, I guess, energy-efficient lighting also, even though it certainly seems brighter. I'm sure it's more energy-efficient. But we've done that throughout City Hall and in our parking structure underneath, so we're trying to keep up with the energy-efficient model. Councilmembers, you have before you consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding any item on the consent agenda?
Mayor, if no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You also have the minutes of the August 25, 2011, regular meeting and the September 1, 2011, regular meeting. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes as they have been presented?
Now, may I move we adopt the minutes as submitted?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance regarding long-term disability benefits, amending Appendix C to the Murfreesboro City Code and adopting new code Article 15 and Section 2-360 as part of Chapter 2 Administration.
Move for his passage on third reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. We'll consider for passage now on third and final reading an ordinance regarding life insurance benefits, amending Appendix C to the Murfreesboro City Code and adopting new code Section 2-361 as part of Chapter 2 Administration, Article 15 Employee Benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August 25, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning application for approximately 5.9 acres south of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, from local commercial CL District to highway commercial CH District. World Outreach Church of Murfreesboro Incorporated is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September 4, 2011, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Our first public hearing this evening is the first of three public hearings we'll be holding for an application made by the World Outreach Church. The pastor, Alan Jackson, is a representative of the church, and he's here this evening if you do have questions about this application, as well as some representatives, his engineer, Mr. Bill Huddleston, and also his realtor. The property is located along the south side of New Salem Highway, just west of Barfield Road. It's actually on the corner of New Salem and Barfield Road. The property is currently zoned CL, which is Local Commercial District, and the properties to the south and west are zoned RS-15. This building is a part of the overall World Outreach Church campus. However, the remainder of the campus that's currently zoned RS-15 is not a part of this application. So the request that's before you is to rezone this CL-zoned property to CH, Highway Commercial District. This property was zoned CL when it was annexed. Our ordinance gives us instructions that if property is zoned commercially in the county and it's annexed into city limits, it comes in with an interim zoning of CL, Local Commercial District. So when it was annexed, the city adopted that CL zone. Before the church acquired it and began using it as part of their religious services, it was used as a former truck-driving school, so some people may remember that truck-driving school there. The church hasn't stated they have any intentions to stop using this property. They just would like for you to consider changing the zoning from Local Commercial District to Highway Commercial District. The maximum height is 75 feet. I know that's a question you often ask. The CH District, which is what they're requesting, the uses that are permitted in the CH District are those uses that we typically see along Old Fort Parkway and Memorial Boulevard. However, I want to make sure that you understand that the uses are similar, but the form isn't. What I mean by form is the way you've seen maybe Broad Street or Old Fort Parkway develop. Our standards have changed since maybe Walmart's been developed or a lot of the properties that maybe you're familiar with, so although the uses would be the same, the form is different. For example, we require landscaping at the base of buildings, and we actually require landscaping, period, because I know there's lots of buildings that you can see that don't have that. We have some lighting standards, and so I just wanted to point out that I've compared the CH zone to Old Fort Parkway, Memorial Boulevard, and Broad Street, but I want people to understand that it's the uses, like the restaurants that you see, the stores, the retail stores, the offices that are permitted, not so much the form, although there are some good examples on all three of those streets. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting on this request. They held it at their church on July 26. The neighborhood meeting was well-attended by people who are interested in the application, as well as staff. The planning commission did hold a public hearing to consider rezoning this property, this 5.9 acres, to CH. Of the seven members present that evening, there was one abstention because he's a member of the church, so Mr. Clark did not vote. So the six of the seven members did recommend that this property be rezoned to CH. I believe if you have any questions about the application, the applicants will be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before making your recommendation regarding this zoning change request.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? If not, then I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request or zoning application, please step to the microphone. Give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Wayne Belt. I live at 1410 Broadlands Drive in Murfreesboro. Actually, in a sense, I'm a stakeholder because I love Salem Highway, and my partner and I were fortunate to be able to develop 180 acres out there that is at the corner of St. Andrews and Highway 99. When we brought our property, which would have been many years ago, we had several different zonings involved in it, including CF, RM-16, Office General, RZ, and Single Family. We're glad to say that the beautiful Gales School is conveniently located on St. Andrews, on the property out there. I just want to say that I think it is a wonderful plan and a very good stewardship on behalf of the church and the city to look at this property with the zonings that have been recommended in the event. And the church uses this property so frequently, I see folks there all the time as I ride in and out of town. But if, and I'm speaking not only of the one, the commercial one on the left, I'll just say all of my remarks about the whole thing they have, but I think the idea, we have waited for a long time on the state of Tennessee, and we keep getting placed in the back burner, but hopefully it's going to be sooner rather than later when the expansion of that highway takes place. But I think to have alternate plans in the event for the future that the church decided to do something different with that property, that it would really help to have the highway situation correctly aligned, to know where it turns in and outs could be. I truly even think, and I haven't discussed with anyone at that church anything about this, but the idea of apartments there, if we have a further need for that because of the proximity to the interstate, of how little it would affect the traffic to have that many folks live somewhere and be able to go to work, would probably be an excellent idea. So I just think that it's forward-thinking, and I think it's a good idea, and I'm excited about whenever the road gets there with the state, and I won't mind if the church waits a long time till I sell mine, till they do something. But anyway, it would really be, I really think it's a good idea, and it's a good planning model.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak for or against?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tony Bailey. I live at 2235 Valley Grove Drive in Murfreesboro. And I guess maybe I'm in a minority here because I'm very, very deeply opposed to this project. Honestly, it makes me very, very sad to see this beautiful bucolic and pastoral setting that you see on Highway 99, to be covered up with concrete and asphalt and signs for fast-food stores and car washes and beer and tobacco stores. I really don't think it's something that we need in our neighborhood, and I've talked to my neighbors, and I just can't find any support for this idea. I'm also worried about what's going to happen to Barfield Road as you go further south on Barfield Road, south of 99. You know, once the Campbell gets its nose under the tent, you have a pretty uncomfortable sleeping partner, and I just have horrible images of more and more businesses on Barfield Road going further south from 99. Again, it's nothing that our neighborhood wants. And I would beseech the church to reconsider this request and think of the neighbors. Here's an opportunity to really do something endearing for the neighborhood and leave this beautiful setting as it is and not disturb it with concrete, brick, and asphalt. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
My name is Anna Moore, and I also live at 2235 Valley Grove Drive. And I'm concerned about runoff from asphalt and things like that. You know, if you've got a lot of asphalt, the water runs off. There are heavy metals that get left around from cars. There's gasoline that just drips out of the cars and all those other things that drip out that will get washed down into the Stones River. And I'm also concerned about light pollution, because when you have all those stores, they like to light them up all day and all night. And that means all the bugs will be attracted there. So all the birds that we have over in our lovely neighborhood that's, you know, a little bit quiet, it's quiet, and we don't hear a lot of sirens, all those birds are not going to have food that they used to have, so we're not going to have so many birds. And I've noticed that the bird population's dwindling anyway, so that concerns me. Also, the noise pollution. Because of all that, there'll be more sirens, and there'll be more horns, and there'll be just more trucks and all that, and I don't like that idea either. And air pollution. You know, all that extra traffic going by, going in there, doing all the things that it does, will put more CO2 and all that stuff into the air, and so it will, you know, we are already in the valley, like Nashville and everything. We have some of the worst air in Tennessee, and I don't know if it's the very worst. I don't want to be quoted on knowing exactly, but I don't want to be breathing a lot of fumes and all that kind of stuff. And what else did I want to bring up? And our government seems to be, you know, our government in Washington, D.C., seems to be forming towards deregulation. So I'm wondering, who's going to be watching the regulations in a couple of years when this maybe starts to happen? And can somebody tell me who's going to really be watching all that regulations? Other regulations just going to kind of go downhill because we all want industry and we want money, and we're not really caring about our grandchildren, seven generations from now, having clean water, clean air, clean food, and good schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak? Is anyone else wishing to speak at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area south of State Route 99, New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial, CH District. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, maybe Mr. Ailat, I think the lady's name was Ms. Moore, asked some questions about regulations, and I know that we have our local regulations, and Mr. Ailat may want to touch on what her question was, since she asked for an answer on that.
Actually, Ms. Moore and I had a very pleasant and lengthy conversation a couple of weeks ago about the city stormwater regulations and about this zoning, about planning within our community. She had some very delightful thoughts, some things that I think I learned from her. She also gave me some literature to read, or quoted me some, and I have been endeavoring to get it and learn from it. Part of the water quality, and the city has a water quality program, we have a stormwater ordinance, and we're required by law to basically discharge clean water into our river. And I did suggest to Ms. Moore that she might want to call Mr. Robert Haley, our stormwater coordinator, because he's in charge of that program, but although he's the coordinator, there's a lot of other people that are involved in it. And part of what we do is review site plans. I believe as long as Murfreesboro is going to be a city, we're going to have some form of planning function, and more than likely, the planning and engineering is going to be charged with reviewing site plans to see that these types of ordinances are fulfilled. Some of the things she talked about, about the light pollution, it has been something that we want to see lighting for security, and that's an interesting concept about the bugs and the bird population. I've never seen that correlation myself, but it may be true. I don't, I don't know. But we do require that light not spill over the property line more than one-half of a foot candle. A couple of years ago, we updated our site plan requirements as part of our upgrades to require that no more than one-half light candle escapes over a property line. And that's something that we look at with every site plan. We receive a lighting plan so that we don't see a lot of light spillage. Now, that may not address the bug situation, and that's something I think I'm going to endeavor to learn about. Were there any other specific questions you'd like me to respond to?
I think you responded to them, Mr. Ailat, very well. I don't know if there's any other questions, but it sounds like governmental, there's a lot of governmental regulations, and it's over a lot of small businesses. I don't think that's a shortage in that arena, so.
Any other questions or comments?
No, Mayor, I move for passage on first reading.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August 25, 2011, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning application for approximately 24.9 acres north of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, from single-family residential 10 RS-10 District to highway commercial CH District. World Outreach Church of Murfreesboro Incorporated is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September 4 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and council members. This is the second of three public hearings that we're holding this evening for the one application made by the World Outreach Church. This particular request is to rezone approximately 24.9 acres located along the north side of New Salem Highway or Highway 99, so just north of the property we previously looked at. The property is currently zoned RS-10 and was zoned such since 1980s. The property is currently used by the church for parking, and there are some recreational fields on the property. There's also a house at 1788 New Salem Highway, which appeared to me to be used for residential purposes, and I just did a windshield survey of the property. The applicants are requesting that this property be rezoned from RS-10 to CH, Highway Commercial District, and that's the zoning district that was a part of the previous request. Again, that CH zone allows the type of uses that we typically see, such as retail, office, restaurant, and those sorts of uses. A residential use is not a use that's permitted under the CH zone, so if, in fact, that house is being used residentially, it may continue to be used residentially unless they abandon that use, in which case a residential use will no longer be permitted. The maximum height in the CH District is 75 feet. There is a significant portion of the property that's located in the floodplain, and we do have, Mr. Ailat mentioned before, a water quality protection area, and any development on this property will be required to adhere to that, WQPA. Part of what that requires is that the vegetation along the actual waterway itself, and this may apply more to the next application than this one, but the actual vegetation cannot be bulldozed or removed, and it's to allow that vegetation to help act as a filter for when water does naturally drain into the creek as it should. It gives an opportunity to filter the water, and also vegetation provides a form of stabilization so we're not having, I guess, dirt or soil flow into the creek and downstream. There are other parts of that water quality protection ordinance, which I know that you're very familiar with, and it's, of course, another component is to make sure that the water has an opportunity to be filtered. The city's greenway system does run along, I guess, it's really not along this property, but just, it's a part of the next application, just to the north along the river. And it's been mentioned that TDOT does have plans to widen Highway 99. We haven't been given a specific timeframe, but we know that is something that's going to be moving forward. So I think with those plans, the church wants TDOT to design the street that's adjacent to this property with CH zoning in mind, so although the church doesn't have a particular use or proposed development for the property, they'd like any roadway designs to conform to a CH-type use. The neighborhood meeting that was held on July 26 also considered this matter, and again, it was well-attended, and it was held at the World Outreach Church. As the previous item was voted on, there were six out of seven members who voted, one abstention. All six of those members did recommend that this property be rezoned from RS-10 to CH. The members of the applicants are in the audience and can answer any questions you may have, and I am available as well. You should conduct a public hearing before considering, or before making your recommendation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Ely before we open the public hearing? Any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning application, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area north of State Routes 99, New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Move for his passage?
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August 25, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning application to rezone approximately 7.5 acres from residential zero lot line, RZ District, and approximately 44.7 acres from single-family residential 10 RS-10 District, for a total of 52.2 acres located north of State Route 99, New Salem Highway, and east of the Sawyer-Green River Trace and Case and Grove subdivisions to residential multifamily 16, RM-16 District. World Outreach Church of Murfreesboro Incorporated is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September 4, 2011, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, please continue.
Thank you. This is the third of three public hearings that we're holding for the application made by World Outreach Church, and the subject property is located north of New Salem Highway or Highway 99, just northeast and west of the property we previously considered. The current zoning for the property is both RZ and RS-10, and as Mayor Bragg mentioned, 7.5 acres is zoned RZ and 44.7 acres is zoned RS-10. The request is for you to consider changing the zoning of those two areas to RM-16, which is multifamily residential district. The property to the north contains one of the city's water towers. To the northwest and to the west are developed city single-family subdivisions, and from the map you can see the small rectangles depict those single-family subdivisions. To the south are property owned by the World Outreach Church and used as part of the church campus. And then on the opposite side of Barfield Road, there's property that will be the source of water. And then on the opposite side of Barfield Road, there's property that will be the subject of the next annexation and rezoning application. On the map, it's shown as RS 15, but they'll become, they'll be coming before you to request a change to that tonight. And then there's some unincorporated area. The RM 16 zoning classification allows multifamily developments by right. It also allows single-family, two-family, three-family, and four-family. The density permitted in the RM 16 district allows 16 dwelling units per acre, and that does not consider any possible density bonuses that you may receive for providing amenities such as basketball courts or swimming pools. There are other institutional uses that are permitted by right in the RM RS, oh, sorry, there are other institutional uses that are permitted by right in the RM 16 zone in a place of worship or a club, such as World Outreach Church would be a use that's permitted by right. In addition to those multifamily uses, lodges and schools are also other such uses, and they require an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The maximum height in this district is 35 feet, so it is shorter than what is closer to New Salem Highway. A portion of this property is within the floodway and floodplain, and again, any future development on the property would have to adhere to that water quality protection area, which includes not removing the vegetation along the stream bank and providing detention, retention facilities that will allow any stormwater to be filtered through the ground before going into the waterways. And that will also limit the type of development, or the amount of development that can go on this property. Density is calculated at the total overall acreage, but there will be some practical limitations, because we don't allow any structures in the floodway, and then, so that will reduce the amount of area that can actually be developed. The greenway does run along the northern portion of this request, so where you see the orange area, I guess, that's, or the hatch line, that's along the area where the greenway will be running. This request was also discussed during the neighborhood meeting that the applicants held on July 26th at the church. The planning commission did recommend approval of the seven members present, with one abstention. Six of those seven members did recommend that this property be rezoned from RS 10 and RZ to RM 16. The applicants are in the audience this evening if you have any questions about this request, and of course, I'm available at any time, but you should conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation on this rezoning request.
Any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this?
I have one, Mayor.
Mr. Young.
Ms. Ely, in our, in our planning commission, there were some concerns about access from the multifamily into the back of the existing neighborhoods, and there is a little green sliver that does access into the neighborhood. Would you refresh my memory on that, please?
Sure, I'm familiar with that, and I should have mentioned it before. Where you see that green sliver is where the access to the city's water tower is, to Stony Meadow Drive. We, as city staff, when we review any future plans, will limit access to this property from Highway 99. We don't want any access to this property going through the existing subdivisions. I think practically it would be difficult, but also staff would not want to allow that to be an access that could be used by the residents. But that little sliver is right now a road that runs between two single-family houses, and you can get to our water tower that way.
But there will be no cross-current between the proposed multifamily and the existing neighborhood.
That's right.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Ely? Anything at all before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning application or rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is William White. I live at 1973 Stony Meadow Drive. I'm coming before you tonight with some concerns about the development and the request, and actually, a comment that the previous speaker just made raised a new concern I hadn't had previously. In the section that's being considered at the moment, we're talking about rezoning to a multifamily situation in some low-lying ground in that area of the New Salem Highway development. Some of the comments that she made were sort of interesting in the requirements that would be necessitated because of your water regulations and the governing regulations around how that water gets back into the river. What I heard in those comments, and as I was reading between the lines in my worried mind, was a more concentrated area where that water would be allowed to then gather and filter through the ground to get back to the river, which says to me, after a decent amount of rain, which we've been blessed with lately, longer-standing water stagnating in a smaller concentrated area, and I'm concerned about the mosquito threat that that might present as a result. So I'd ask the council to consider some of the environmental impacts of concentrating drain water in a stagnating environment with that requirement to filter through the ground. My other concerns regarding this request has to do with zoning something that was either open or for single families into a multifamily zoning regulation. And the effect of a multifamily home development in that neighborhood raises a lot of questions in my mind. Primarily, of course, because I live there, what will that do to the value of my home? I don't think it's a favorable plan to allow additional multifamily construction in that neighborhood, as I believe that would reduce the value of my home as a single-family home. With respect, understood that there are multifamily residences leading through Stony Meadow Drive up until that sliver of green that we spoke about, which really denotes not too far away the cutoff of the multifamily to the single-family part of Stony Meadow Drive. This section, although it would benefit and complete sort of the planning around multifamily dwellings, I just would hesitate to see additional multifamily dwellings being built in the concern I have around the value of the home. The developmental impact on the greenways, I'm not really concerned about with this request because of its distance from the greenways area, although any conversation of development in this, in this tract certainly does lend itself to a concern about greenways, but in this particular request, I'm not overly concerned about that. Overdevelopment of the community, certainly something that needs to be considered. Murfreesboro is a rather unique place, and I've been blessed to be here for just over three years now, and I have to say that I love this city, and I love what its potential is. And I think that we need to be very careful about how we choose to develop what potential there is. The 13 years of financial responsibility is a compliment to you all, both elected and appointed. I would like to see that responsibility extend to our developmental planning. And what I'm talking about is some of the current conditions we find ourselves in, and I'm not trying to be short-sighted about this, but there is plenty of vacancy currently for potential residents of Murfreesboro, should they be interested. Indeed, along Stony Meadow Drive, we have more than a few houses that are currently vacant and foreclosed upon and waiting new residents. I would hate to see additional vacant houses, if there are overgrown lawns and disrepaired roofs and sidings cropping up as a result of this. So consider overdevelopment as well, as you're talking about this proposal. Another concern as it regards multifamily homes, which is more affordable housing, of course, and everybody, I believe, has the privilege, in this country at least, of seeking out the best possible dwelling for their situation. I would be concerned about what type of multifamily residential homes are going to be built there. Apartment complexes, which may be part of this approved zoning request, obviously would have a detrimental impact on not only the value of the property and the community in general, in the aesthetic sense, but I'd also be concerned about the affordability of that kind of property in the neighborhood, and what that might mean for the demographic that we enjoy currently in that area. The infrastructure that would need to accompany this massive amount of development concerns me. I understand that Salem Highway planning for expansion is ongoing. Until that time, I would be very concerned about access to and from the neighborhood, not only for myself and for my fellow neighbors, but also for emergency services personnel. As we get more residents, more emergencies tend to happen. It's just the nature of the beast. Please consider all these comments, and also, to go back to that stagnant water question, might need some more evaluation, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Jay Mack. I live at 2025 Stony Meadow Drive in Murfreesboro. I won't go into, first, I agree with a lot what this last gentleman has said. A lot of my neighbors that I've talked to, we are concerned about this idea of possible apartment buildings going up right behind us. I was at the meeting at the church, and they did explain to us that the greenery would still be there, and there would be some forestry area, because we were also concerned about the animals that use that area there. We don't want to see that all go away, okay? One of my main questions is that, the map's not there, but that sliver that goes by the water tower. I was under the impression that that was city property, but according to this, it's not. Because if it was city property, then it would definitely be gated off so that the public could not get through there in the future. Like even right now, I don't believe that they can get past the water tower anyways, so it doesn't get used. But does anybody know why that sliver is not part of city property? That's one of my questions there. But otherwise, I didn't get up earlier. I do like what the, the other change of changing to the CH area. I would like the idea of being able to go to a little strip mall to buy my groceries instead of driving halfway across town. But that was my main concerns there, and I agree with everything he said, and I, as I said, I'm sort of representing three or four of my neighbors, too, with that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
My name's Julie White. I live at 1973 Stony Meadow Drive also, and my main concerns about this is the privacy we currently enjoy. Neighbors all know each other. We're all single-family homes nearby. The children play, no problems in the streets, nothing, and we're all very concerned about the multifamily aspect that might crop up right behind us, because at the moment, it's very quiet, we've got, it's just very tranquil, and we just don't want to see that peace destroyed by whatever might end up right there on our doorstep, and we're all kind of scared right now. And that's my main aspect of this thing, and I think my husband touched on everything else that really worries us, so thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area north of State Route 99 New Salem Highway and east of Sawyer Green River Trace and Casen Grove subdivisions to residential multifamily 16 RM 16 District. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm going to ask for Mr. Ailat to come up one more time, and I know there was a few questions that I'd like for him to maybe elaborate on for a second. I think, I think he was, Mr. White was referring to the low ground as maybe the floodplain area that are...
Well, I wasn't certain, but I think he may have also been referring to the possibility for detention or retention areas or stormwater quality ponds.
That was my second question, the difference between those two, and how long they retain water and flow off.
Well, with these retention ponds that will almost certainly be required, these are going to be water quality ponds, we want them to be designed so that they don't allow mosquitoes to be, to be, become a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Most of the time, they're dry, and yes, in wet years and in springs, they, they may well be times when they hold water. But what we want to see is for them to be designed so that it's deep enough that the mosquitoes don't, create a habitat for them to breed, and then for the larvae to, to become adults. That's something we want to pay close attention to. Certainly, if we become aware of them being problems, we want the property owner to do something about it, or use a larceny side. We, we spend a lot of effort trying to manage mosquitoes, because they are a very bad nuisance. In the floodway down there, we, we want it to remain intact. We don't want the water dammed up in it. We want it to remain intact, so it will convey the water, and we want the vegetation around the stream channel to remain intact. It's, the environmental benefits are such that we want the, that those trees and the vegetation to stay there. We don't want the banks to erode, so we don't want that changed around much. In fact, if anything, we want more trees to be planted to create more shade. That actually would help with the mosquitoes. Mosquitoes don't like to grow in the shade. They, they want a little bit of light they can have it. The, one of the things I heard a question about is that sliver. I am under the impression that that is actually owned by the church, and that there may be an easement that the city has when we acquired the water tank site. But I will be very frank with you, I'm, it causes me to want to check again. I looked at the survey prepared by the applicants, they show it as land that they own. Very frankly, we don't, as a staff, we don't want to see a exit for the, the residence of any future development there, to use that as an access point. We may want to see it as a gated access in the event of a emergency, like a tornado or some catastrophic event on Salem Highway that might close it off, another way to get in. Our fire department likes these kind of ways, it could be locked and gated and stay that way all the time, but if ever there's a problem, boy, it sure is good to have another way in, and out. So that's the only reason that I would want to see that ever connected into any kind of development on that property. And that's something that the planning commission did discuss a little bit in our work session, that we don't want to see it opened up as a, for vehicular access for future residents. Were there other questions you would like to know about?
I think you touched on the majority of them. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? You've already spoken, so if you have a question, you'll need to talk to staff about it, if you would. Yeah. If you talk to staff here. Mr. Gilly? What did he add? Mr. Gilly, did you have a question or comment? Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? Any other questions regarding this rezoning?
If not, Mayor, I would move for passage on first reading.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Then, World Outreach Church has on first reading all of these rezonings that they have asked for. If you're here for those public hearings, you're free to go or free to stay. We're welcome you at, through the rest of the meeting, but if your interest was just in World Outreach, then you may wish to go and do other things, if you like. We do appreciate you being here. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August the 25th, 2011, will conduct a public hearing to consider annexing approximately .1 acres located southeast of the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99 New Salem Highway, and to consider a proposed plan of services for the area Pinnacle Bank is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September 4th, 2011 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. This application indeed is, is a separate application than that of the World Outreach Church. It's being made by Pinnacle Bank, who happens to own the property. The property, however, is located just across Barfield Road and New Salem Highway from the previous applications, and that just happens to be circumstance. The, the Pinnacle Bank owns this property, and they, I think, acquired it from the Rollins. You can see that it's located along the south side of New Salem Highway, just east of Barfield Road. The actual area that's being considered to be annexed is that little tiny triangle that you see in blue. You can see that the majority of the existing parcel is already in city limits. The, of course, property across, to the north is in Murfreesboro city limits, as well as property to the west. To the south and east is the unincorporated area, and then just across the river is area that's... just across the river is area that's within Murfreesboro city limits. Apparently, at some time in the past, this parcel was illegally subdivided. And we say illegally because we can't find any record of it being, of subdivision plat being submitted and being approved per our zoning ordinance and state law. What has happened, though, is the parcel that was created is mostly within Murfreesboro city limits, but there's a little tip that's not within Murfreesboro city limits. Pinnacle Bank is requesting that this little triangle be annexed, and the triangle is about a tenth of an acre, .1 acre. The remainder of the parcel that's already within city limits is about 1.9 acres. So if annexed, it would be a two-acre parcel that would be within the city. Pinnacle Bank is asking that this .1 acre or tenth of an acre of property be annexed so that they can just go through one process so the entire parcel will be under one jurisdiction, City of Murfreesboro. They won't be required to do simultaneous, get their plans approved simultaneously through Rutherford County Planning Department and City of Murfreesboro Planning Department. Any zoning change, we can affect that, which of course the next item will be to consider changing the zoning. Property is contiguous to current city limits on its western side. It's within our urban growth boundary, and it's relatively easy to affect the annexation. I have prepared a plan of services and submitted it to you for your review. And the city should be able to provide its services according to that plan of service with, I don't foresee any kind of problem with that. The planning commission did have seven members present that evening. There were two abstentions, Ms. Jones and Mr. Halliburton. Both have some sort of affiliation with Pinnacle Bank, so they decided to not participate in the vote. So there were five members who voted, and all five members did recommend that this property be annexed. I will welcome any questions that you may have, either before or after the public hearing. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before considering adopting this plan of services.
Any questions for Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation, this is the annexation. Please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to annex an area southeast of the intersection of Barfield Road and State Route 99, New Salem Highway, and to adopt for same, a plan of services. Pinnacle Bank is the applicant.
Move for his passage?
Seven.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August 25th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning application located southeast of Barfield Road and State Route 99, New Salem Highway, to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, and to zone approximately .1 acres as highway commercial, CH District. Simultaneous with annexation, Pinnacle Bank is the applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the September 4th, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, council members. This item is also being requested by Pinnacle Bank. It's for the property we just considered for annexation and for the remaining 1.9 acres currently already located within Murfreesboro city limits. So the request will be to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from RS 15, which is its interim zoning, to CH, and to zone approximately .1 acre CH simultaneous with its annexation, in effect that we'll have the entire two-acre parcel zoned CH. The property that's just across Barfield Road is, the first public hearing we held this evening was to consider changing the zoning from CL to CH. The map says CL because currently that is the zoning, but you did recommend changing that to highway commercial district. Just to the north, across the street, is that recreational area owned and used by World Outreach Church. And a portion of it, you did recommend zoning to CH, and then the remainder to multifamily this evening. Of course, the area to the east and south is an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. That CH zone has a maximum height of 75 feet, and it would require a buffer, a type D buffer, which is 15 feet wide, along the borders that, any adjacent property that zones single-family residential, so to the south and maybe some to the east, there would be required to have a buffer yard. The CH zone allows uses such as retail uses, office uses, and restaurants. That's another one that we often see as CH zones. The church has not submitted any development plans. They haven't told us any specific plans that they have for the property, but they would like for it to be zoned CH as well. If you have any questions about this request, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. And you should conduct a public hearing before recommending a zoning change for this property.
All right. You meant the bank and not the church. This is the bank.
Oh, sorry. I got in a habit, didn't I? I got in a roll. This entire application is made by Pinnacle Bank. Pinnacle Bank owns the property and acquired it from the Rollins. And again, there were seven members, planning commission members, present the evening that they voted on this. Two abstained, the same two who abstained from the annexation vote. So five of the seven members, the five voting members, all did recommend that this property be zoned CH.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone approximately 1.9 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, and to zone approximately .1 acres as highway commercial, CH District. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on August 25th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the sign ordinance regarding BZA procedures and tenant signs for end or corner tenants. The City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the September 4th, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. This public hearing is for proposed amendments to some provisions of the current City of Murfreesboro sign ordinance. The first proposed change pertains to allowed time of 10 days for a signed permit applicant to file an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals under the current sign ordinance. The current zoning ordinance allows 15 days for an applicant to file a variance of appeal. This change is requested for the ordinance to mirror the zoning ordinance of 15 days. The second proposed amendment is the timeframe allowed for an appeal to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Currently, the sign ordinance states at the next meeting following 45 days after filing an appeal. The zoning ordinance simply states not more than 45 days after an appeal is applied. For consistency purposes, staff proposes that the sign ordinance be the same as the zoning ordinance, simply stating not more than 45 days after an appeal is applied. There does not appear to be any substantial reason for these difference in time limits, and we believe this should eliminate confusion on the part of the appellant's, the applicant's, as well as staff. The third proposed amendment would broaden the signage allowed to certain districts of tenants who apply, occupy corner and end tenants in multi-tenant facilities. This would allow end and corner tenants in all mixed use and commercial zones the same signage that is currently allowed in planned development and overlay zoning districts. Planning Commission unanimously recommended that these proposed amendments to council for approval on August the 3rd. Staff is available to answer any questions that you have on this.
Any questions for Ms. Kerr or any other member of staff regarding these proposed amendments? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against these proposed amendments, please move to the microphone, give us your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 25 and 1/4 Signs, Sections 25 and 1/4.5, 25 and 1/4.6, and 25 and 1/4.26, dealing with BZA procedures and tenant signs for end or corner tenants.
I move for his passage?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance with regards to amusement rides.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on September 7th, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the matter of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding amusement rides. And basically, this is something that we studied, and we believe it is an appropriate amendment to our zone ordinance. We need to schedule it for a public hearing. I don't think that there'd be a very much, I don't think it'd be a very lengthy public hearing, whatever night we choose.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, I suggest October 13th.
All right. Council members, it's been recommended October the 13th for a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Just a minute. Not so fast. All right. October the 13th, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance with regards to amusement rides.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on September 7th, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the matter of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding amusement rides. And basically, this is something that we studied, and we believe it is an appropriate amendment to our zone ordinance. We need to schedule it for a public hearing. I don't think that there'd be a very much, I don't think it'd be a very lengthy public hearing, whatever night we choose.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, I suggest October 13th.
All right. Council members, it's been recommended October the 13th for a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Just a minute. Not so fast. All right. October the 13th, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to legislative change requests. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of council. As members of TML, you know it has a process. It's changed that process a little bit this year for governments who wish to suggest that the league get involved in advocating for changes at the General Assembly. We have two issues that I thought we needed to bring to you to get the council's endorsement of staff's recommendation for those changes, as the new process requires local governments to specifically authorize such requests. The first of those, and this is all reflected in material that was put on your dais tonight, for reasons I'll explain in just a second, comes from the Police Department. I have given you a copy of an existing state law and the proposed submittal to the Municipal League. And the request from the Police Department is that we ask the league to advocate for a change in state law that would allow the state curfew law for minors to be adopted by any local government. Currently, we are not able to adopt that state law because it has certain population classifications to which Rutherford County does not qualify. The advantage the Police Department feels this will have is that our city court does not have jurisdiction over juveniles. The state curfew law, if adopted by the city, and it would be an opt-in decision that you could make at some future date, would allow the Police Department to bring a juvenile who is violating the curfew law to the jurisdiction of the juvenile court. It would also make for the possibility of criminal offenses for an adult who was in a role of responsibility for a juvenile if there were a repeat problem. So we have issues with juveniles now, that even though we have a city ordinance, the Police Department does not feel they can really address fully by getting the child who's not receiving proper supervision and that child's parent to the juvenile court. So the suggestion is that the city ask TML to ask the legislature to change that ability to allow Murfreesboro and other communities to be able to adopt the state law. There's a little bit more information in the summary, but that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding these legislative proposals and our ability to pass them along to our municipal league as part of their policy committee recommendations?
Mayor, if there aren't any questions on that first one, let me address the second. The second one, I sort of wanted to ask for conditional approval. The reason that I was not able to get it to you with your agenda packet is that I was seeking some additional information from the state officials who would be in a position to enforce and interpret a provision of state law. Quite late this afternoon, I finally received some verbal indication that what I saw as a problem, the state official did not. And what I would like to do would be to ask your approval to give staff discretion to submit the request if it becomes necessary. And this would be a decision we would reach tomorrow, pending confirmation of the information I got today by telephone, relates to the ability of the city to adopt local privilege taxes based on some classifications for sellers of alcohol. There is, the way the state law is drafted had called that into question. I was initially not able to get clarification, but now it may be that this is unnecessary. If I can't get that clearly confirmed, we would like to be able to have the General Assembly make it clear that local governments have the ability to ask for local privilege taxes on all kinds of persons, vendors licensed to sell alcohol, liquor by the drink, and that some of these new classifications have not inadvertently become exempt from local privilege taxes.
All right. Any questions of Ms. McGannon regarding these recommendations? If there are no questions, would you like to forward these to, as necessary, to our Municipal League for inclusion in their policy proceedings?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
If the council could vote to adopt these policy recommendations.
Just a motion to accept this recommendation and forward them to Municipal League's Policy Committee.
Yes, sir.
Which they may adopt or may not.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
May I move that we approve the recommendation?
Second. All right. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have been presented, I believe, with a packet regarding the 2011 City Manager Performance Evaluation. And what we have generally done for the last 10 years, as I have been mayor, is each year in October or November, as we get the opportunity, we have a written evaluation of the city manager's performance for the preceding year using a performance evaluation, which we have used and we have catalogued for a number of years here. Obviously, last year was Mr. Lyons' first year to be evaluated, as we had promoted a new city manager. So this year, I put to you the city manager performance evaluation that we have been using, and ask if you would like to do that again this year. Of course, the first question is, would you like to review the city manager's performance? If So the clarification that I need on is, what do we mean by below expectancy? What do we mean by exceptional?
Well, these are subjective, and they're up to the raider. So they're what you would like to put down, and there is a, under each category, there is a comment section. So if you would like to rate that person on the performance based on a number scale, 10 being the highest, and either 1 being the lowest, or N being not observed, you may fill that out any way you wish. That's the way the council has done that in the past.
Well, what I don't understand is, for instance, and these are just clarifications, because this is my first time participating. Question, how does he motivate others? I think that's question number five. Well, as a city council member, I personally don't know on a day-to-day basis how he, nothing personal against you, Mr. Lyons, but I can't say how Mr. Lyons motivates others on a day-to-day basis, because I have no measurement. Like, another question, relationship with city employees, I have no idea. How do we measure this? Do we do city anonymous employee surveys? I mean, how can I, in all honesty, rate these questions when I have no benchmarks, I have no plans of actions laid out? I don't know at what point do we look at three months down the road and see the objectives that we have set? Are they being followed? I just, without benchmarks, and I just don't see how I can measure this. And you guys have been doing it for a while, so maybe you all can help me on this.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
I think she's got some great questions, because I think in the beginning, some of us have the same confusion. I think where you have to look at it is, is this is based on what you, as an individual, observe, and at least that's the way I look at, from mine, is the way I observe his performance, his ability from what I know. I'm not down here on a day-to-day basis, like any of us are, none of us are. And I can't, I can't tell you how he operates on a day-to-day basis, because we're not here. But I can tell you how he operates with my reaction and my questions to him, and from what I see that he interacts with employees that we deal with, you know. And I think that's all this is asking. It's not, it's not asking for anything on a, on a real deep basis. You can only answer what you know from what you observe personally, from the knowledge you have, and the, you know, from what you observe. It's just, it's just, it's our opinion individually. And that's why you'll see a lot of these numbers, you know, none of us have, a lot of us have different ratings. I mean, one may have an eight, and the other may have a six. But if you talk to them individually, they all may tell you the same thing. It's just the way they rate a 1 through 10, if you will.
Here again, based on my review of the form, then I'll have a lot of questions I won't even answer, because I have no basis.
I think that's certainly your privilege.
I can do that.
If it's not observed, then it's not observed.
So if we, we are, as a council, evaluating the city manager, and here again, in my opinion, over half of these questions cannot be answered based on observation, is it really an evaluation of the city manager? Relationship with city employees, influencing others, scale from 1 to 10, 1 to 9?
I can tell you from my experience, and this is my 24th year, I know if we, a lot of times, if there is problems with the city manager, any city staff, you're going to know about it, through the city employees, that, you know. A lot of times, our evaluations come from the feedback of others. That's what we do.
That's what I was asking, beginning, at the beginning, do some of these questions, do we get the input of our employees? I mean, that, to me, would be how I can actually rate, I mean, on the comments of, because I don't observe a lot of these questions.
But they're not asking for the employee's evaluation, they're asking for the council's.
Okay, relationship with city employees, how can I, as a council person, see Mr. Rob Lyons on a Thursday, maybe talk to him maybe once or twice a week, and then answer a question, does he treat all employees with respect? The question about relationship with the community?
If you have, I think if you have questions about whether you can rate or not, the questions that have been proposed to the council are, we hire the city manager. Nobody else hires the city manager.
Right.
So we have an opportunity and a responsibility to rate how we feel like on certain items. He is doing his job. The criticism before we began doing this was, there was no evaluation of the city manager. No one had an opportunity to rate the city manager on what they were doing. So we have provided a form where if you wish, and if you observe, or if you hear, or if you see, and Murfreesboro, even though it's a big town, it's not a big town, if you can observe, or see, or hear what somebody says about the city manager, you can use this rating form to provide information back to him, critical to whether he has management skills, whether he has planning skills, motivates others, staff development. When you look at city staff, are you pleased with city staff and the way they act when you are around them? Those are the kinds of things that this form allows you to do by yourself. Doesn't take into consideration what Mr. Gilli says, Mr. Bratcher, or me, or anybody else, it's what you've observed and what people have told you. If you have not been told, if you have not observed, if you have not seen, you may put down "not observed." Otherwise, you may decide on your own that he is least skilled, below expectations, which are your expectations.
That's what I'm saying.
Meets expectations, exceeds, these are your expectations, not anybody else's.
But as a council, should we not have, all have the same expectations of our city manager?
I would presume we do, but you're going to let us know how you feel about your...
But I don't know what the expectations are.
Then you need to provide more expectations. If you have no expectations, he has no idea. So whatever you observe, or sense, or feel, or hear, you need to write that down on this form, that you have not observed, or that you have. And if you have, you need to make comments to let him know whether what you've observed, or what other people have told you, or what you have seen, either meets expectations or does not, based on a number scale. It's the best way we've come up with yet. If you have another method of doing that, I'd be happy to consider that.
Well, I guess in my mind, when I'm thinking about evaluating a person, in all honesty and fairness to the person, we sit down, we set goals, we set benchmarks, we follow up to see are the goals being met? If not, let's talk about it. That's just what I'm used to, but here again, I'm not...
This is a part-time job we have, this is a full-time job he has. You have access...
And that's why I think this evaluation should be taken from a different view, because he is, and here again, no disrespect to you, but we're talking about evaluating our city manager that manages the city of 108,755 citizens. And in my opinion, this is not a true evaluation. But this is the way you all always done it?
This is the way we do it publicly. You may sit down with the city manager every day, every week, every month, and tell him what your expectations are. This is just a public evaluation, so the public knows what you feel about the way the city manager is working. It's public.
And that's why we came up with this, because, you know, we look back, and as the mayor said, you know, we, as elected officials, we're evaluated every four years. The public gets to tell, you're doing a good job, or you're not doing a good job. They don't work with us every day either, they don't know the hours that we put in, that we spend. They see us here on TV on Thursday night, but they don't see the rest of the things that we do. But yet, they evaluate us on our progress every four years. And we felt like, and the comments from the public was, is, you know, the city manager is pointed by the council, yet, you know, we don't, we don't get to evaluate him. Well, that's what we're doing, and that's what we decided to do a few years back, was for the public's view, we get to, this council, he works for this council, we get to make a decision, and we get to evaluate him on the job he's done, from what we observe, just like the public evaluates us.
Mr. Gilli, did you have a comment?
I did. I was just going to comment on how I have viewed and used this tool in years past. As far as how the city manager reacts to the community, or gets along with the community of the questions that pertain to that section of the evaluation form, what I look for is, when I receive phone calls or emails from citizens, and I forward those on to Rob, how quickly he responds to those, the feedback I get from those citizens as to whether they were pleased with the timeliness of the response, and the quality of the response. And I think that also falls down into his relationship with motivating, the questions pertaining to motivating staff, and those types of things. What I look for is, if it's a question that has to be answered or dealt with by someone else in the city employees, how well that individual responds to the citizen's concern, or criticism, or complaint, because how that staff member reacts to the public's needs, to me, is a direct reflection on the relationship that Mr. Lyons has with that particular city employee, as far as giving them direction, and guidance, and motivation. I look also at situations to where we have meetings with different, various boards and commissions, or if there's been some traumatic events, such as after the tornadoes, watching how he interacted, now, just prior to his appointment as the city manager, his interaction with the employees in those situations that we see from time to time. Even when there are things, happy times, such as retirement parties and things like that, watching and seeing how the other city employees react and get along with Mr. Lyons gives us opportunities to be able to see those types of things in action as well. As far as the subjectivity of the number scale, I think every one of us have different viewpoints as to what those numbers mean, even though there's a list of definitions, if you will, at the beginning of that, that gives you a little guidance in that. I used to always tell Mr. Haley that until it was his last year, in most categories, he was never going to get anything higher than an eight or a nine, because, to me, as long as you're still in the job, you should never be at the top of it, because that means you've not reached your, you've already reached your full potential, and you've got nothing else to offer. Other folks may look at that and say, if you're doing the best job that I want you to do, you get the 10 that year. That's just a difference in personal opinion. To me, as far as setting benchmarks, one year's evaluation to the next. When we evaluate Rob this year, whatever critiques, criticisms, or laurels that we give him, to me, set those benchmarks for what he's supposed to either improve upon for the next year, preparing for the next year's evaluation, or the types, or the things that he gets laurels on, thinks he's doing absolutely well, that we expect him to continue doing them in that same, in that same path. Also, from week to week, as we give him instruction, our feelings and thoughts of how we want things done, cumulatively, from one evaluation to the next, we've had 52 weeks in and out to be able to say to him, this is what we'd like to be seeing you do more of, or differently, or less than, and that's our opportunity, I view, is to see, you know, we've told you to do this over the course of the year, and you've either done it, or you haven't done it. That's just how I've used the tool over the last several years.
And I guess, observing, being on the council, are we all in agreement with what the expectations are? And is it really fair to Mr. Lyons? Here again, when a six to me may be a six, have a different connotation to you. Things like questions on here, like team building. Number one, let's say you mentioned a few times there are complaints, okay? The number one team player in complaints in our city are the frontline people. For instance, if I work for the water department, and someone has a complaint, well, Mr. Lyons is not going to be the first one to hear. It's going to be that worker out there that comes face-to-face with that citizen that has a complaint. And when I'm talking about objectives and benchmarks, has that frontline person that works for the water department, who actually comes face-to-face with the public, what kind of training have they had, for instance, in citizens' complaints? These are some of the things I'm talking about, but I think, I guess I'm so used to, when we talk about evaluate, really evaluate, I guess because I came from a company, that when we do evaluations, it's not like this, because everybody's clear, but...
Well, those individual frontline workers have supervisors that are evaluating their performance, just, and I realize what you're saying about all having clear, same expectations, the downside to Mr. Lyons' job is the fact that he has seven very distinct bosses with seven different distinct personalities.
That's the point I'm making. And we all should be on the same page. No, it shouldn't always be like that, if, as a council, this is just my opinion, as a council, if we're going to evaluate the city manager, we all need to be on the same page. And like Mr. Young just said, well, that's it, we all have our opinions, but our opinions should be the same. A five to me, I should have a clear understanding. If we all were to sit down and say, the mayor says, everybody write, what does a five rating mean to you? If we get six different answers, then are we truly evaluating the city manager? And that's just, you know, that's just how I see it.
Well, the definitions, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I don't think we all need to have the same. I think we all, like Mr. Gilli said, we're all individuals, and we all see things differently. But we all, it gives you what a five means, what a six means, and a seven, and tells you what that means.
Least skilled, what does that mean to me?
It means whatever it means to you.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm saying, as a council, we should all be on the same page. All of us know what five means, all of us know, but that's just not how the city of Murfreesboro does it. I'm just, I just wanted to get some clarification.
I'm not sure you can get any from what we've told you, but obviously, if you look at the previous year's evaluation, which I have asked the Personnel Department to, or the HR Department to furnish, we all have our own respective views of each of the 14 areas that are provided for evaluation, so...
And there's a comment section onto each one of those, and we can explain what, if I rate a six on one of the issues, I can, I can explain what that six means, in my own personal view.
Mayor, another example that I can give, in the classes that I teach at MTSU, at the end of the semester, although I've set out a clear expectation of what I'm expecting of my students, and by the fact of the class that they've taken, they all generally have a concept of what they're expecting to get out of that class. But at the end of this fall semester, I will get an evaluation from 32 different people on a 1 to 10 scale on questions just like this, that all 32 of them are going to have completely different viewpoints as to what a 1 for me is, and a 10 is, and the university uses that same process, and then comes up with an average median score to evaluate me by. Even though that all 32 of those students have the same objective and the same intent of what they think they're supposed to be getting out of that class, but they all have 32 different viewpoints as to whether I'm meeting it in the way that they want it to. And like I said, it's a 1 to 10 scale, and it's a 25 to 30 question ranking that I get.
So I guess the first question then is, do we want to evaluate again this year?
You know, I think it's helpful to us, but I think it's, more importantly, it's helpful to Mr. Lyons to see whether what we think of his performance, and that's what this is really designed to do, is to let him know if we expect him to improve in areas, and he might, that we, we're the voice and the eyes and the ears of our citizens, that's what they elect us for. And if we relay messages on to him that he needs to improve in certain areas, that's what this gives us an opportunity to do. I think it's helpful to him. I'd like to see us continue to do it.
Do you need that, we need to do this in a form of motion on each of the topics, or, Ms. McGannon, how do we need to handle this?
I think you might want to do a comprehensive motion, terms of, we're going to evaluate, we're going to use this instrument, and then when we're going to do it, so you don't have just a series of motions. But yes, I think it would be appropriate, when you decide what you're going to do with the issues, to vote. You can certainly take individual motions if you want to, but I would point out, I think... think you have a contractual obligation to Mr. Lyons to give him an evaluation.
Well, I was just suggesting, I understand that for the efficiency sake of one, but we don't get to question number three as to a date until we've actually decided one and two, so that's why I was asking, perhaps maybe take evaluation and tool as one motion, and then set the date separately to...
Certainly, that's your prerogative.
Mr. Washington.
Yes, but since Ms. Gales Harris has an issue with the form, shouldn't you split them up?
You certainly can.
Okay.
Why don't you make a motion then, Mr. Washington, based on one and two, and then if we can't pass that, then we can...
First of all, the fact of evaluating, I'll make a motion that we do that.
That we evaluate.
Uh huh.
Second that.
All right. Would you like to include in that the form that we have?
No, no.
No, okay. A motion to evaluate. We have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding that? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Okay, now I'll make a motion that we use the same form that we've been using for how many years it's been.
10. 10. I think this will be the 10th year. All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Can you have a comment?
Sure.
And we're using the same form that we've used for 10 years, and our city has grown leaps and bounds.
I understand it fully.
Okay, I understand it too.
Mayor, just, if you give us a little history too on where this form came from too, this isn't something we invented ourselves.
Ms. Carpenter gave this to me when we initially decided to do an evaluation. I asked her to peruse her HR network, people that she talked with, to find out if there was a form available that could be used for evaluation, and I think it can be used for any evaluation, but it does appear to be heavily weighted toward management, not toward a clerical, or a staff, or administrative person, but more to a management person. And that is the one the council has agreed to use, I think, for nine years, and this would be the 10th year.
And I have somewhat of a history evaluating in my position in Milton-Selley, you know, when I, I have looked at, I have looked at almost 100 every year. This form works, and I do have a little bit of issue with that numbering system, a little, but I got over it. So that form is, it'll work. It's, it's objective, you all know that I was criticized in the past for evaluating Mr. Haley a certain way on certain things, when the rest of you really didn't touch it. But he would get with me, and maybe you all too, I don't know, after we did the process, and we'd go over some things, and I think it'll get easier for Ms. Gales Harris, once she gets a little history and feeling with this document, and, you know, she sets the expectations individually, like we do, and then what you do next year is, Rob, you need to meet them, or not, and employees can't go backwards. You know, and, you know, you know them like a book, because they work well, but some years, for whatever reason, they have a bad year.
If we set expectations individually, we have seven different expectations for this one man.
Exactly.
Which does not make any sense to me, when he is...
I understand.
...the city manager.
I understand.
That doesn't make sense to me.
We heard you loud and clear, but it is what it is.
That's, that's the attitude this council takes on a lot of things, it is what it is, and it needs to change.
Okay, well, maybe it will.
Maybe. That's a big word. And is it really fair to Mr. Lyons that we have seven different opinions up here on objectives, on how he should be performing?
Well, I think I'm going to, I'm going to ask him eventually, because we want to take your comments seriously.
I'm very serious when I make comments.
That's why I'm trying to spit the motion up, where you can have an opportunity to do your thing.
I'm, my thing is serving the citizens of this town, and by doing that, if we're going to evaluate the city manager, I think we all ought to be on the same page. That's my thing, because I was elected by the citizens, and that's what they're expecting.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, as to the form then, any other comments, questions? All right, the motion is to use the same form, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
All right, we have several things that we would look at, each of you has your packet with the form in it, and the previous years?
I know, I am.
Okay, we can provide you another one.
It's at home.
Would you be able to fill this form out in the next week, and provide it by next Thursday?
I will, Mayor.
Good. Would that be all right? All right, then, if we could have a motion to that effect, that it be filled out by next Thursday?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, to fill it out in the coming week, and bring it back to the mayor's office, if you will, or to HR, whichever you prefer, and we'll have them combined, compiled. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Then I would suggest that after they are compiled, we hand deliver those to each of the council members, which would be a packet that would include the compilation, as well as each other council member's evaluation, so you can see their comments and their rating, as well as your own, and that we would schedule a public hearing, or a public meeting, not a public hearing, but a public meeting, which would be held in room 218 at 10 o'clock, either on the 3rd, or the 4th, or the 5th of October. We could do it at 9 o'clock, we could do it at 8 o'clock, but...
Could we look for the week after that?
Sure. The week after that would be the 10th, the 11th, or the 12th?
Mayor, I'm available the 10th, but not the 11th or the 12th.
Why don't we look at the 10th then?
Sorry.
Would that be, meet with the council's approval?
What day is that?
It's Monday, Monday the 10th.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
10.
The 10th at 10, is that all right?
10, 10.
Or would you rather do it at 9?
10, I'll give you time to get up.
10 to 10. Or to get back, change clothes, and then come in. All right, there's a motion?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Is that correct, did you get that?
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Mr. Young did, all right, Mr. Gilli. All right, then, we'll advertise a public meeting on the 10th of October at 10:00 a.m. in room 218. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
All right, thank you, members. All right, if you, I'll get you, you need a copy?
Yeah, I can get an answer.
All right, go make a note. Does anyone else need a copy? All right, if not, well, go ahead. All right, the next item for consideration is that Dr. Ray Buttram has written, resigning from the Murfreesboro School Board, and Ms. McGannon, I will ask you, if you will, to kind of go through the procedure involved in filling a vacancy in the Murfreesboro City School Board.
Certainly, Mayor. The state law requires that the local legislative body make an appointment that would fill the term. Dr. Buttram's term would end, would have ended on April 30, 2014, so an appointment for his replacement will have the same term. There is no requirement in state law, or as a matter of city ordinance, as to how the council chooses Dr. Buttram's successor. State law does set forth certain requirements for school board members. They have to have either a high school degree, or a GED, they have to be of recognized integrity, intelligence, and ability, they must take annual training, they cannot be a member of the council, or one of the city's officials, they have to be a resident of the city. Those are the state law requirements. As a matter of city policy, for ethical standards, since the school board is a position which receives compensation, you have previously said, but you certainly would have the ability to waive, a requirement that someone complete a disclosure of interest form before they were appointed to a vacant position which receives compensation. I think many of you know that the school board generally meets twice a month, on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays. They have a requirement that four members of the board vote for any item before action can be taken on it. It's not like the council, a simple majority. Perhaps for that reason, state law does impose a burden of haste on you by indicating that the appointment should be made at the next regular council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those requirements.
Any questions of Ms. McGannon? Council members, how would you like to proceed with filling the vacancy on the Murfreesboro City School Board?
Mayor, can I make some comments?
Yes.
Well, first of all, you know, I know Mr. McFarland is absent, so I don't think, in my opinion, that we need to actually make that appointment tonight. I'd like to have all the council members here, and have their input, and their, and their decision-making on this is a very important position. You know, and I, and I can't recall, we've done this before on the council, Mayor, where we've appointed someone, I can't remember, Ms. McGannon, maybe you can share, we...
The council's had to deal with vacancies on the council. You have taken a variety of approaches, you have had, in essence, an application process, where you had people say they were interested in being appointed, and submit items and names to you. You've also sort of made a decision without going through that process, based on who you thought would be a good candidate, and who might have expressed an interest to you. So you don't, in my opinion, recollection, have a clearly established precedent, certainly there would be nothing that would be binding on you as to the way in which you should proceed. I think the expectation that this would be, you know, the person managing the school system, in the way that the council has, you know, responsibility for making sure that the administration of the county, of the city goes forward, indicates that some qualifications would be appropriate to consider, but there's nothing, other than the list of qualifications I mentioned to you, that you are required to adhere to.
Thank you, and you, I think I've been through that a couple of times, but I couldn't recall exactly how we handled it. You know, I think that this has been a very important position, and I think we've all probably received comments, or, you know, people have called us, and they've called me, they've emailed me, I, we've gotten letters, and I think there's a lot of people interested in this position. And as you try to think about what's the best way, and the fairest way to handle it, I kind of, I like the idea of us maybe, since Mr. McFarland isn't here to take it, take to our next council meeting, give the public an opportunity to fill out an application. Because I've getting a lot of calls from people, and I'm really not sure if they meet the qualifications of even living in the city, you know, and the different qualifications they have to, have to qualify for. So I'd like to see us to have some sort of application form that they would fill out, turn into the city, and then we could take that application form, whether we get five people who are interested, or 15, and then maybe just put them on a ballot, if you will, and then let the council members just vote on whoever they want to, whoever they see they feel fit to be in that position. That's, I mean, that's one way to handle it, and there may be a better way to tweak that, but...
Mr. Gilli?
Mayor, I was going to suggest, and initially, I really didn't know about the idea of doing an application process, just because of time, and us needing to make a decision, that sort of thing, but even today, I've had calls and emails from three people interested in it, that I hadn't even thought of before, but when I talked to them, they all would meet those criteria, and would bring insight to things. Whoever is appointed to this will have to fill out the...
Disclosure.
Disclosure of interest, anyway. What I would suggest, that instead of just necessarily an application, is that anyone interested, go ahead and fill out that disclosure of interest, that will give us some background information to look at those individuals, rather than developing a separate application, and then evaluate those that have submitted those, those disclosures.
We have a board and commission questionnaire, that would...
That's what I was talking about.
Maybe the two of those together.
Put those two together, both are available on the website, or you could come to the mayor's office and get a copy of each one of those, but I would suggest, Ms. McGannon seems to have a frown, a little frown on her, frown?
I apologize. I'm not sure that the application that we currently have for expressing of interest for a board would necessarily reach all of the issues which state law calls for us to do. I think it would be a relatively simple matter for us to have an, an application that would identify, make sure that those issues we're required to have are there, and the disclosure form, we could, if this is the council's desire, I think get something up on the webpage very quickly, that would explain that you needed to fill out both forms. I didn't pull that off the, the online today, to make sure that it has everything there, I didn't anticipate that, sorry.
I don't think it has anything about whether you have a high school, or diploma, or a GED.
That was the one I was worried about.
That's why, if we had a separate rule, or add some questions to the existing one...
If we added to it, that would be very fast, I mean, we could have that up tomorrow morning, if that's what you wanted to do.
We add that qualification to the, to this disclosure form, and we will have it all in one, would that work?
I think it would, if, if that's the council's choice, yes.
I think there is an urgency, because, don't we have three members that are missing on the school board, right now?
We just had one resign.
But I'm talking about that are out.
Mr. Rehner's out, in hospital.
And Dr. Andrews is out, right? So we have three people missing on the school board right now. So I think there's definitely an urgency for us to appoint.
Well, then, why don't we ask folks if they are interested, that we will modify our questionnaire, and add the appropriate question, or questions, and then ask them to fill out, if they are interested, and certainly, as council members, you can encourage people, if you wish, to apply, and if they'll fill that out, plus the disclosure of interest form, we can have those all gathered, and before us at our next council meeting.
Might be helpful to have a hard date, that the applications are due, so that is very clear.
Thursday.
Next Thursday.
You know, noon on Thursday, or something, I mean, that's fine.
Noon on Thursday?
Noon Thursday? Is that in agreement with everyone?
Well, some of the questions on that application is...
It's a questionnaire, it's not an application.
It's a questionnaire, it asks questions about employment, education, family members, service in the community, address.
What you've done, what position you're seeking.
Same ones we do for boards and commissions, is that correct?
Contact information.
Same questions we ask if we want to serve on a board or commission.
And it's on the website, under board and commissions.
But what I think we could do, Mayor, would probably have a special link that would have both forms together, make something special, have that be on the, on the front page, so to speak.
Excellent.
I've had people, everything from the gamut of emailing me their actual resume, and notes of recommendation to folks calling, saying, hey, if you ain't got anybody else, I'll do it, and, you know, the truth lies somewhere between the two, I think, as to the ones that are serious about the time commitment and everything, and that's where we can sort of sort those, sort that out.
All right.
Mayor, if I might, it's not something specifically required by state law, but thinking about the questionnaire that we've got currently, I wonder whether we, it would be beneficial to the council to also amend it, in addition to asking anything that's statutorily required, to ask about involvement with the city schools to date, because I think that might be of particular interest to the council members, as they're trying to sort through these applications, including whether you've got children or grandchildren in the system, whether you've been involved in the PTO, that sort of thing, because I don't think a questionnaire, as it stands, would deal with that, and yet I think that might be pertinent information for you, and it would be easy to add if you feel that would be helpful.
If you want to do that, is that all right? Thank you, Ms. McGannon.
So we're going to set a date on the date we will be appointing the replacement?
Next week.
Will we be able to go ahead and do that next?
Next Thursday. Next Thursday.
We get those by noon, and then submit it out to the council prior to the meeting to...
If you wanted to make them perhaps due Wednesday at noon, we can get them copied...
Let's do that, have that Wednesday at noon, and that'll give us time to delay with those, we'll get a appointment next Thursday night.
We'll deliver them Wednesday evening.
That's a good idea, that'll work, give us time to go through them.
All right, is there a motion that would like to encompass all of those suggestions?
I move that we approve that recommendation, Mayor, all of it.
All right, is there a motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions regarding the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, council members. Ms. Wright, are there any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, we have several tonight we need to talk about. We have some that have met our application process for both the background check and the codes inspections. One is a ownership change of a convenience store at 2898 South Church Street. We have one that is also another convenience store at 2395 New Salem Highway, another convenience store at 1624 New Salem Highway. Those have all met our requirements. We have a special event application for Oakland's Association for an event at 901 North Manny Avenue, and that also has met our requirements. We have a application that is different than any we've had before, so I'm going to call special attention to it. It is for Three Brothers Deli and Brew House at 219 West Main Street. They currently have a building at that location, and next door, there is a lot that they are now leasing. It used to be a building that had burned down, and they have seeded it and put up a fence and spruced it up, for what they want to do in October is to have some outdoor events. This lot is a separate lot from their building, but they are leasing it. There is not ingress or egress from their building to the lot, other than for, through the sidewalk, and they do have the approved status for the cafe sidewalk in front of their building and in front of this lot, and what they want to do, and attached to what I laid out, is the dates, they would like to have special events, outdoor music, food, and drinks on the lot, and they've listed out some of the, like the food tents, they're going to have the food served there on the lot and cooked there on the lot, and the dates and times that they want to have their events, and because this is something we've not done before, other than for charitable special events, we wanted to call it to your attention. If this is successful, they're considering putting in access from their building and upgrading necessary codes requirements to their building to have this be a permanent thing, maybe next year. This is kind of a trial, and so the owners are here tonight, if you have questions, but other than that, I'm waiting for the form from codes. I talked to Mr. Whitaker tonight, and he's not aware of anything that it's going to be a problem.
All right, council members, you have these beer permit applications.
Mayor, on the last one, I'd just say, I have lunch at Three Brothers Lot, and the Fortneys have done a great job with renovating that lot, and I think this has a lot of potential for success. I noticed they listed having Murfreesboro's first outdoor Halloween party, I think probably Oktoberfest may be our first polka music on the square, perhaps, too, but with that, I would move for approval of the beer permits.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you very much, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding those bills, or would you like for staff to pay the bills?
Move we pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second. I wondered if anybody else was going to consider helping us pay them.
Maybe she'll pay them, we don't second.
If we don't, whoever offers to pay first gets the pam.
That's the way it works.
He's going to pay them in carpet.
Remnants.
I don't think Delta Dino will walk back.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
All right, as to board and commission appointments, I would like to recommend reappointment to the Board of Gas Examiners, Mr. Bart Ring and Mr. Joe Duncan the second.
Move we approve the mayor's recommendation, second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Then your other business to come before the council at this time?
Yes, Mayor, I've got one item. Before you, we have distributed Resolution 11R22, which is an authorization to submit certifications for a Fast Track infrastructure grant. What the Fast Track infrastructure grant is, is it pays for infrastructure, for projects that create jobs in Tennessee. The city has been a partner to this in two other situations with Husky Trusts, and then last year with NHK Seating, and so we are asking for your approval to submit these certifications. These certifications would allow us to incur costs that would be reimbursable if the grant is approved. It says that we're going to follow purchasing regulations, it says we're going to follow wage rates, and that while the grant may not, is not a guarantee, it does give us an opportunity to start a process that does take some time, and one of the things the city's trying to do in the economic development arena is to show that we can move very quickly, and this is one of the things we think can help give our community an advantage, so would ask for your approval.
Other than staff time, there's no obligation, financial obligation of the city?
And the other projects, those were funded by the state and by the company, we merely acted as a, although we received the grants, we did not have hard cash, that was a part of the Husky Trust project, for instance.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Lyons regarding this Fast Track infrastructure grant?
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation, second.
All right, a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, other business to come before the staff, for the council? No, then you are adjourned, thank you very much.